Good evening. I'm ready to call to order this regular meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Angler.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Newman.
Here. I ask if you are able, please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a couple of special presentations this evening. For our first presentation, I would like to call Dusty Russell, city's economic development analyst, to the lectern for a special presentation on our business recognition program and to introduce our award recipient. Good evening, Dusty.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. The city's business recognition program is designed to highlight exceptional Thousand Oaks businesses for special achievements or other unique contributions made to the city's economic prosperity, sustainability, resilience, or other activities fostering community enrichment. Tonight, we're proud to recognize our newest program award recipient. Starting a new small business is no small feat. It requires significant commitment, sacrifice, and the courage to believe. The business we honor tonight is named after the twilight morning hours when belief was tested and vision was strengthened. While juggling college, full-time jobs, and side hustles, Sean and Amber McCarthy carved out precious hours before daybreak to nurture their dream. Time and again, Sean would look up after a stretch of focus to find the clock read 5:07 a.m. That number became a symbol of their dedication and drive to create and contribute something meaningful in their hometown. Fast forward seven years to today, and 5:07 has blossomed into a thriving business with two locations in the city. It's become known as a place where loyal regulars and new friends can gather to draw inspiration from excellent coffee, art, and community connection. At this time, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor, to say a few additional words and to present the award.
Very good. I will come up there and join you. Be right there. And I will be right back with the certificate. So I'd like to invite Sean and Amber to come join me. Thank you for being with us tonight. I'm thrilled to present this to you on behalf of the city, not just because of the great community service you provide and wonderful local business, but also because you're my local coffee shop. And so presenting this is a real privilege for me. We're so happy to recognize you. We wish you many years of continued success. Thank you. Now, don't go away because we'd like to have you join us for a photo with the rest of the council. Am I doing the next presentation from here or from the dais?
Yeah, you can invite Natalia up and then return to the dais.
Okay. Thank you. So for this evening's second special presentation, we recognize the New West Symphony. So I'd like to welcome CEO Natalia Stineva to speak about NWS and their 30th anniversary. Please come on up, Natalia.
Thank you.
I understand you have a presentation for us tonight, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and the city's team. I wanted to introduce someone special in the audience today, my colleague Patricia Jones, who is Emeritus Executive Director of T.O. Arts, and also she is our Development Director. So thank you for being here and supporting me. I've been with the New West Symphony for over 17 years, and I've seen it grow from a small regional hub into a cultural, large cultural institution. Most recently, I have been working on our 30th anniversary yearbook and coming across fascinating facts and photos that highlight our roots. So I wanted to show you a few facts. So we have, we just recently celebrated over 60 years of classical music in Ventura County. In October 1961, 20 musicians gathered for the first rehearsal in a farm building, and the population of Cuneo Valley was under 10,000 people at the time. And under the auspices of California Lutheran College, they formed an orchestra. So California Lutheran University and the Cuneo Symphony Orchestra jointly operated until 1985 with conductor Alma Ramsey, who came as a faculty member in 1965, and formed an 85-piece ensemble. At the same time, in West County, Ventura Symphony Orchestra was operating under music director Bor, and they hired phenomenal conductor, music director, and music director Boris Braut. So in September 1990--
Am I doing the next presentation from here or from the dais?
Yeah, you can invite Natalia up and then return to the dais.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So for this evening's second special presentation, we recognize the New West Symphony. So I'd like to welcome CEO Natalia Stineva to speak about NWS and their 30th anniversary. Please come on up, Natalia.
Thank you.
I understand you have a presentation for us tonight, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and the city's team. I wanted to introduce someone special in the audience today, my colleague Patricia Jones, who is Emeritus Executive Director of T.O. Arts, and also she is our Development Director. So thank you for being here and supporting me. I've been with the New West Symphony for over 17 years, and I've seen it grow from a small regional hub into a cultural, large cultural institution. Most recently, I have been working on our 30th anniversary yearbook and coming across fascinating facts and photos that highlight our roots. So I wanted to show you a few facts. So we have, we just recently celebrated over 60 years of classical music in Ventura County. In October 1961, 20 musicians gathered for the first rehearsal in a farm building, and the population of Cuneo Valley was under 10,000 people at the time. And under the auspices of California Lutheran College, they formed an orchestra. So California Lutheran University and the Cuneo Symphony Orchestra jointly operated until 1985 with conductor Alma Ramsey, who came as a faculty member in 1965, and formed an 85-piece ensemble. At the same time, in West County, Ventura Symphony Orchestra was operating under music director Bor, and they hired phenomenal conductor, music director, and music director Boris Braut. So in September 1990--
Am I doing the next presentation from here or from the dais?
Yeah, you can invite Natalia up and then return to the dais.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So for this evening's second special presentation, we recognize the New West Symphony. So I'd like to welcome CEO Natalia Stineva to speak about NWS and their 30th anniversary. Please come on up, Natalia.
Thank you.
I understand you have a presentation for us tonight, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and the city's team. I wanted to introduce someone special in the audience today, my colleague Patricia Jones, who is Emeritus Executive Director of T.O. Arts, and also she is our Development Director. So thank you for being here and supporting me. I've been with the New West Symphony for over 17 years, and I've seen it grow from a small regional hub into a cultural, large cultural institution. Most recently, I have been working on our 30th anniversary yearbook and coming across fascinating facts and photos that highlight our roots. So I wanted to show you a few facts. So we have, we just recently celebrated over 60 years of classical music in Ventura County. In October 1961, 20 musicians gathered for the first rehearsal in a farm building, and the population of Cuneo Valley was under 10,000 people at the time. And under the auspices of California Lutheran College, they formed an orchestra. So California Lutheran University and the Cuneo Symphony Orchestra jointly operated until 1985 with conductor Alma Ramsey, who came as a faculty member in 1965, and formed an 85-piece ensemble. At the same time, in West County, Ventura Symphony Orchestra was operating under music director Bor, and they hired phenomenal conductor, music director, and music director Boris Braut. So in September 1990--
Am I doing the next presentation from here or from the dais?
Yeah, you can invite Natalia up and then return to the dais.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So for this evening's second special presentation, we recognize the New West Symphony. So I'd like to welcome CEO Natalia Stineva to speak about NWS and their 30th anniversary. Please come on up, Natalia.
Thank you.
I understand you have a presentation for us tonight, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and the city's team. I wanted to introduce someone special in the audience today, my colleague Patricia Jones, who is Emeritus Executive Director of T.O. Arts, and also she is our Development Director. So thank you for being here and supporting me. I've been with the New West Symphony for over 17 years, and I've seen it grow from a small regional hub into a cultural, large cultural institution. Most recently, I have been working on our 30th anniversary yearbook and coming across fascinating facts and photos that highlight our roots. So I wanted to show you a few facts. So we have, we just recently celebrated over 60 years of classical music in Ventura County. In October 1961, 20 musicians gathered for the first rehearsal in a farm building, and the population of Cuneo Valley was under 10,000 people at the time. And under the auspices of California Lutheran College, they formed an orchestra. So California Lutheran University and the Cuneo Symphony Orchestra jointly operated until 1985 with conductor Alma Ramsey, who came as a faculty member in 1965, and formed an 85-piece ensemble. At the same time, in West County, Ventura Symphony Orchestra was operating under music director Bor, and they hired phenomenal conductor, music director, and music director Boris Braut. So in September 1990--
Good evening. I'm ready to call to order this regular meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Angler.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Newman.
Here. I ask if you are able, please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for And we have a couple of special presentations this evening. For our first presentation, I would like to call Dusty Russell, city's economic development analyst, to the lectern for a special presentation on our business recognition program and to introduce our award recipient. Good evening, Dusty.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The city's business recognition program is designed to highlight exceptional Thousand Oaks businesses for special achievements or other unique contributions made to the city's economic prosperity, sustainability, resilience, or other activities fostering community enrichment. Tonight, we're proud to recognize our newest program award recipient. Starting a new small business is no small feat. It requires significant commitment, sacrifice, and the courage to believe. The business we honor tonight is named after the twilight morning hours when belief was tested and vision was strengthened. While juggling college, full-time jobs, and side hustles, Shawn and Amber McCarthy carved out precious hours before daybreak to nurture their dream. Time and again, Shawn would look up after a stretch of focus to find the clock read 5:07 a.m. That number became a symbol of their dedication and drive to create and contribute something meaningful in their hometown. Fast forward seven years to today, and 5:07 has blossomed into a thriving business with two locations in the city. It's become known as a place where loyal regulars and new friends can gather to draw inspiration from excellent coffee, art, and community connection. At this time, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor, to say a few additional words and to present the award.
Very good. I will come up there and join you. And I will be right back with the certificate. [laughter] We're good. We're good. So I'd like to invite Shawn and Amber to come join me. Thank you for being with us tonight. I'm thrilled to present this to you on behalf of the city, not just because of the great community service you provide and wonderful local business, but also because you're my local coffee shop. And so presenting this is a real privilege for me. We're so happy to recognize you. We wish you many years of continued success. [applause] Thank you. Now, don't go away, because we'd like to have you join us for a photo with the rest of the council. [inaudible] Am I doing the next presentation from here or from the dais?
Yeah, you can invite Natalia up and then return to the dais.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So for this evening's second special presentation, we recognize the New West Symphony. So I'd like to welcome CEO Natalia Staniva to speak about NWS and their 30th anniversary. Please come on up, Natalia.
[applause]
Thank you. I understand you have a presentation for us tonight, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and the city's team. I wanted to introduce someone special in the audience today, my colleague Patricia Jones, who is Emeritus Executive Director of T.O. Arts, and also she is our Development Director. So thank you for being here and supporting me. I've been with the New West Symphony for over 17 years, and I've seen it grow from a small regional hub into a cultural, large cultural institution. Most recently, I have been working on our 30th anniversary yearbook and coming across fascinating facts and photos that highlight our roots. So I wanted to show you a few facts. So we have, we just recently celebrated over 60 years of classical music in Ventura County. In October 1961, 20 musicians gathered for the first rehearsal in a farm building, and the population of Canejo Valley was under 10,000 people at the time. And under the auspices of California Lutheran College, they formed an orchestra. So California Lutheran University and the Canejo Symphony Orchestra jointly operated until 1985, with conductor Alma Ramsey, who came as a faculty member in 1965, and formed an 85-piece ensemble. At the same time, in West County, Ventura Symphony Orchestra was operating under Music Director Boris, and they hired phenomenal conductor Music Director and Music Director Boris-Brois. So in September 1995, two orchestras merged to form what we now know New West Symphony. So Orchestra, New West Symphony Choir, we have two, we have Dr. Wyatt Morton from CLU, he just recently retired, who is the director of our New West Symphony Chorus, and of course Grammy-winning Music Director Michael Christie. And we have sold over 500,000 tickets in the last 30 years. So we're very proud to be a resident company of Bank of America Performing Arts Center. I'd like to show you what it is today. I couldn't bring all my 68 musicians tonight, but you could see them on the stage in a couple of weeks. So I brought a short video about the symphony. Oh, and this is Boris-Brois, Music Director Boris-Brois, the founding director of the New West Symphony.
It's hard to believe that New West Symphony is turning 30 years old in 2025. Comprised of over 60 core musicians under the leadership of Michael Christie, New West Symphony connects its performances to patrons through variety, innovation, passion, and Since New West Symphony became a resident company of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center in Thousand Oaks when it also opened 30 years ago, patrons and supporters have worked passionately to cultivate a local performing arts scene to rival other great growing communities. We are passionate about welcoming audiences, curating their experiences, and uniquely reinforcing the talents of our local community. New West Symphony performs an array of music and increasingly crosses genres as part of its programming vision and the musical tastes of the community. The Symphony strives to partner with regional performing and cultural entities and proudly amplifies their vision through music. We also take our role as a regional hub for music education and community building seriously. Generations of young people have missed the opportunity to grow up with a music education, and we know how important music is to nurturing creativity and perseverance.
You know, Duke Ellington was right. It don't mean a thing if it ain't got that.
Thousands of third, fourth, and fifth graders are bussed to New West Symphony venues to experience symphonic adventures programs each year, many of them attending a structured live performance for the first time. We create engaging events that introduce them to attributes of musical instruments, foundations of music, and entertaining features that have students clapping, singing, and tapping along. No arts organization can exist without a passionate community supporting it in numerous ways. We strive to make our ticket prices accessible. We invest in the cultivation of relationships throughout the community with various events to identify, celebrate, and steward supporters. Join us today and enjoy the camaraderie and satisfaction of contributing to the well-being of our growing community.
So this is, in a nutshell, this is what this symphony represents. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about our musicians, our programming, and I'm going to bring our Music Director, Michael Christie, next to help me finish this presentation. So I wanted to show you, our musicians are, often play in the studios on major movies, current movies, and they send us their photos from the red carpet. We also create fundraising events that are educational and entertaining. We are innovative, and we are resilient. During the pandemic, Director of Cultural Affairs Jonathan Serret opened the doors for us, and we created exceptional docu-series called Global Sounds: Local Cultures. The series highlighted the cultures represented in Ventura County. We turned the theater into our own recording studio. Today, we boast over a dozen artistic partnerships with schools, universities, and we also invest back in the community by subsidizing tickets for students and families. I'd like to bring my amazing colleague, our Grammy-winning Music Director, Michael Christie, who will be conducting upcoming concerts in a couple of weeks in this theater, who will tell you a little bit more about our programs and what we have planned for 2026. Michael?
Hello to everyone on the council. It's great to be with you, staff of the city. Hope you've had a wonderful summer. Can't wait to be with you in just a couple of short weekends. Our coming programs are really informed by our mission to embrace our community, as you can see on the photo there. As we came out of COVID, we partnered with so many organizations, and those partnerships are continuing and strengthening every season. We also have made, one of our highlights is part, and one of our key points being part of this community is to break the barriers between the audience and the orchestra. And so we created several programs. One's called Intermission Insights, where during the intermission, audience members get to interact with the artists that have performed, answer those burning questions, and just be part of the creative process. This coming concert, we're going to be doing another one of our side-by-side concerts that will feature, or pieces that will feature, high school and college students from around Canejo Valley on one of the pieces. So they get a chance to have what I would call a pro-am experience. And then in the video, you saw our Labby Harmony Project, which is so impactful in West Ventura, has been going for 15 years, and we really are so proud to have now several classes of first-generation university attendees. So we're very excited about the Labby Harmony Project. We also created a new founding legacy society, because we've had, over these 30 years, wonderful patrons who want to include us in their charitable giving as they move through their life. Our coming three concerts are a great representation of the amount of variety that we're doing in our 25th anniversary season.
Three not-to-be-missed New West Symphony programs this autumn in Thousand Oaks and Camarillo. ET: The Extraterrestrial, the full movie performed with live orchestra the weekend following Halloween. Costumes are encouraged. The Best of Beethoven, a tapas-style event with the very best music from one of the very best composers of all time, featuring the New West Symphony and Chorus, and pianist Ena Folliks. Some of the works feature all 130 performers, some just one, and everything in between. A feast for the ears, eyes, and spirit. Winter Dreams, a winter spectacular event featuring Duke Ellington's jazzy re-imagination of The Nutcracker with California Contemporary Ballet, a Las Posadas procession, music of Tchaikovsky, and audience sing-alongs. A most fitting SoCal holiday season experience. Buy tickets now to lock in best pricing and secure your seats for ET: The Extraterrestrial. Best of Beethoven and Winter Dreams. Tickets and information at newwestsymphony.org.
So you get a sense of the scale of our programming, and we also introduced two other audience engagement projects as well. One is a sing-along project, because, boy, we all have a huge amount of different kind of music we love. So in our Best of Beethoven concert coming up, audience members are going to have a chance to sing, listen to the music, and Happy of the Doobie Brothers and Pharoah Williams with our huge chorus and orchestra. And then as we head into next year, I know a lot of people have been starting to think about America's 250th birthday, and so we're launching programming to celebrate America's 250th birthday. Everybody's calling it America 250. And as you see here, we're going to be doing a concert of Happy 250th Birthday, America, and then we'll be having a huge collection, a kaleidoscopic collection of symphonic masterworks and music spanning all of the genres that represent our wonderful American heritage. It's a pleasure to be part of this community. I'm sorry I can't be with you in person tonight. Thank you for your support, and I look forward to seeing all of you very, very soon.
Thank you so much. I'd like to invite you to, we have an event this Sunday to, for those who adopted a musician. I invited to the Old Steakhouse here on Thousand Oaks to have lunch with us and our musicians. And on October 4th and 5th, we are performing the Best of Beethoven. And as Michael said, it's a tapas-style Beethoven, so you will recognize every tune on the program. Thank you so much, and happy 30th anniversary to Bank of America Performing Arts Center as well. You guys celebrated it last year, and we're celebrating it this year. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Natalia and Michael, for taking the time to come and updating us. Congratulations on the 30th anniversary of NWS, and thank you for sharing with us the wide variety of programming you have to offer. You've got the three programs this fall. Can't wait to hear more details about all the programming next year. Thank you. We move now to public comments, and I'll turn it over to our clerk, Ms. McGuire.
This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
So as the clerk just indicated, there will be three minutes for each public speaker tonight. We encourage public comment, both in person and remotely. There are five speakers in chambers tonight, none remote. And what I will ask is, I'll call off the three names that are up. If you're up next, please come up to the lectern here. If you're on deck, as it were, please come to the two chairs behind the lectern to keep the meeting moving. So our first three speakers will be Joseph Alfano, then Melissa Soriano, and Gary Hartung. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Joseph Alfano. I'm speaking today as a resident of Newberry Park, as well as a member of the organization VC Defensa, an immigrants' rights advocacy group in the county. First, I want to give credit and recognize the City Council for your commitment of city funds for the Ventura County Immigrant Legal Fund. So I want to say thank you for the $100,000 that you pledge. Unfortunately, there's much more to be done. As neighbors, we have the obligation to defend one another from psycho kidnappers, racism, and frankly, property-damaging, business-unaffected individuals that are ruining our communities. Three weeks ago, ICE agents rammed their vehicle into a home in Simi Valley, leaving it unstable for the other tenants to live in. Yesterday, ICE kidnapped an Oxnard resident across the street from the elementary school where they dropped their kid off. And through all this, the folks we contract our police service to, the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, have made clear whose side they're on. The head of the department, Jim Freihoff, can't be bothered to respond to calls about masked kidnappers, but he made sure to spend the time to drive over to neighboring Moore Park and attend the Charlie Kirk vigil and honor that gentleman's life. For those of us who understand the racism that represents, his message is loud and clear. City of Thousand Oaks, we demand that this city works with our neighborhoods, schools, and businesses to ensure community safety. In your absence, our community and VC Defensa have stood up with our heads held high and done the work you don't. Distributing food to families who lost their only bread winner, patrolling neighborhoods for ICE, scouting out possible victims, holding no-your-rights meetings in businesses and general clubs and organizations around the county. This is all work that, as a community, we should be ashamed we're not doing. If you are undocumented, or you would like to have some assistance with anything in our community, and you can't trust the police department or our City Council to help you, we ask that you contact VC Defensa. We ask that you join community organizations to defend yourself. We're there to help you. We are your neighbors. So please call 805-296-1119. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Melissa Soriano, followed by Gary Hartung and Joshua Gray. Good evening.
Hi. Hello. My name's Melissa Soriano.
Yeah, you can pull that mic down if you like.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And I'm a volunteer with VC Defensa. Now, I know this isn't the first time you've heard of us or have seen us here in the City Council meetings, but for those who aren't aware of what VC Defensa does, I want to state that they are a community support organization dedicated to protecting and advocating for immigrants' constitutional rights. First, I want to start by saying that, yes, this is a public comment on ICE abductions and the fear they continuously keep causing in our community. As Joseph stated, I'm glad to hear that the City of Thousand Oaks donated to immigrant funds, but I think we can do more. Thousand Oaks can create additional aid to emergency funds to support local organizations like VC Defensa and 805 Undocu Fund. These organizations are continuously providing rapid response, food assistance, immigrant resources, and emergency family planning to Thousand Oaks neighbors. Secondly, this is for the community and for those who are listening online. I would like to promote VC Defensa's hotline number. Caller text 805-296-1119. Whenever you feel unsafe, caller texts if you feel like you are being followed. Caller texts if any of your family members have been abducted by ICE or have been displaced. We are here for you. We believe that everyone should feel safe in this community and that everyone should get treated with dignity and respect. So thank you for your time, thank you for your time to, sorry, thank you for taking your time to read my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Hartung, followed by Joshua Gray, and then Haley Ligsay. Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to attend a lot of these performances where people sing here at the Cavali Theater or the Sher Forum. These people are very, very talented, and I appreciate them coming here. But I'm 74 and a half years old. I'm just too damn old to sit here at 8 o'clock at night. I've done this about three times, and I fall asleep. So when you're discussing contracts with these people, tell them that if they want to come and perform here, they will have a performance at 1, 2, or at the latest 3:00 in the afternoon for us old geezers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Josh Gray, followed by Haley Ligsay. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Newman and Council. Here with a few updates from your local chamber. The chamber had its Spotlight Mixer last Wednesday at Crawford Social with great success, and thank you to all those that attended. Leadership Canejo's next cohort started last week. We, actually, Natalie, who was speaking to you earlier, is in the cohort, and will have its second session on October 10th at CLU. The cohort's current class size is 32 individuals, so very excited for the program for the next nine months. Ribbon cuttings coming up over the next month will include Liberty Direct Primary Care, Cyber Security Center for the Girl Scouts of California Central Coast, and Carden-Canejo School. Excuse me. On November 7th, the chamber will have its next Spotlight Breakfast on Healthcare and Education. And then on the tourism front, the RevPAR numbers, general measure of profitability, continue to see high levels of variance that, I know I've been saying that all year for you all, but we did get some recent analysis from Oxford Economics for 2026, and they did note that ADR, the pricing calculation for hospitality, has been did note that ADR, the pricing calculation for hospitality, has been remarkably resilient for all our hotels in the Canejo Valley, especially compared to our regional neighbors, Simi Valley, Santa Clarita, the rest of the county. And their 2026 analysis did suggest some modest growth for next year's financials, which we did take a lot of, you know, it was very great to see positive modest growth over what we've seen so far this year. For PR efforts, we did a press release on the new website that saw a total of 163 pickups by media outlets for a total potential audience of 66.2 million. On socials, we continue to see follower growth across all platforms and had 18 collaboration posts in August with almost 120,000 views. The new tourism website that launched in May, we continue to see good year-over-year traffic with August up almost 100%, which was good to see, and we continue to see that steady positive increase over the course of the year for website traffic. With recent rebranding, we've developed some new creative. The next project to be released soon will be the Canejo Valley Beer Wine and Cocktail Map, highlighting over 40 establishments in the region as well as their signature beverages for each location. We're happy to announce that our area won an RFP from the Central Coast Tourism Council to host their fall summit at split venues between the Reagan Library and the Palm Garden Hotel. And the next TID meeting is going to take place October 21st at the Courtyard in Agora Hills. Thank you all for your partnership, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Do we have any additional public speakers?
No.
Okay.
The vote's drawn.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we turn to the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Ingrid Hardy, for any comment.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. On the first matter regarding the comments on, from VC Defensa, thank you for attending our meeting this evening. And I just wanted to state that, as one of the speakers mentioned in their comment, the City Council did approve $100,000 to be donated to the Ventura County Community Foundation Neighbor Support Fund. And in fact, with our contribution, that has actually prompted other private donations to the fund. With regards to Mr. Hartung, I believe he has left the meeting, but I would like to make it clear to the public that the Bank of America Performing Arts Center is a rental facility, and whoever rents the facilities, they get to set the time for their shows just as they set the time for their ticket prices. There are some shows that have matinee options, and we will be sure to get that information communicated again to Mr. Hartung. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We move next to our consent calendar. Are there any questions or items to poll? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please prepare us for a vote. Move the consent calendar.
We have to do that first.
Yeah, it would help to have a motion. Thank you.
Mr. Adam, can I have your verbal vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, and that motion passes 5 to 0.
See, I need to make a, wait for motion, and Al needs to wait for the vote. No, no, you're the first. I forgot. But we have to vote, too, so. We move now to our public hearing, and the clerk will open that hearing, please. Item 10A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to Consider Agenda Item 10A, Triennial Public Health Goal Water Quality Report. There are no speakers for this item.
Thank you. And presenting this evening will be the city's Utility Superintendent, Michael Devla, sorry, Michael Devlavovich. And available for questions are Public Works Director, Nader Hadari, Deputy Public Works Director, John Minkel. And available remotely is the city's Water Quality Supervisor, Paul Jorgensen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mike Devlavovich, Utility Superintendent in the Public Works Department. I am presenting on the 2025 Triennial Public Health Goals Report, which is related to the quality of drinking water that the city provides to its customers. There we go. Okay. So Public Health Goals Overview. This report is a state requirement established in 1996 and is unique to the state of California. The regulation requires all water systems with over 10,000 service connections to complete the report and hold a public hearing every three years. City staff must analyze water quality data over the last three years in the annual water quality reports that the city provides to its customers and report on any contaminants that were detected above the established public health goal standards. So what are public health goals? Public health goals are water quality goals developed by the state or EPA where contaminant concentrations in drinking water are set at zero or near zero, with no known health risks. If these goals are exceeded, there's no violation issued or actions to take except for putting them on the Public Health Goals Report. When these goals are developed, only health risks are considered, but not treatment feasibility, treatment costs, the cost to consumers, or analytical capabilities of accurately testing down to zero concentrations. There are over 170 drinking water contaminants tested on a regular basis, and about 95 of them have established public health goals. It is also important to understand what maximum contaminant levels, or MCLs, are. They are also developed by the state or EPA, but are the enforceable standards that all water systems must meet. If these standards are not met, violations are issued, public notification is required, and actions need to be taken to meet the MCLs. When these standards are developed, health risks of drinking water over a lifetime are considered, but unlike public health goals, other important elements are also taken into consideration, such as treatment feasibility, treatment costs, affordability to customers, and testing techniques that can accurately measure down to these levels. Out of roughly 170 contaminants tested in drinking water, about 108 of them have MCLs. The city's water is of high quality and consistently meets all MCLs. The city does not treat its water, nor does it have its own water source, so it purchases all of its water from Cuyagus Municipal Water District, and they purchase their water from the Metropolitan Water District. During a typical year, 98% of the city's water comes directly from Metropolitan's Jensen Treatment Plant in Granada Hills, which receives water from the Sacramento Delta through the State Water Project. The other 2% of the time, the city's water comes from Cuyagus's Lake Bard Treatment Facility in Thousand Oaks, when Metropolitan shuts down their facility for a week or two to perform annual maintenance. Most of the data used in this report comes from Metropolitan and Cuyagus Municipal Water Districts, since they do extensive testing after their treatment processes. The remaining data comes from the city's testing process of taking at least 20 samples Over the last three years of testing, and out of 95 contaminants that have set public health goals, only five were detected above the public health goals. These contaminants were detected infrequently, at very low levels, and well below the maximum contaminant levels. Most of them are naturally occurring elements and are caused by the natural erosion of mineral deposits or water, as water travels through the soils and streams and lakes. In conclusion, the city provides high-quality water to its customers. All contaminants have tested well below the MCLs historically and currently, and these are the enforceable standards that ensure safe drinking water. The few contaminants that test above the public health goals were detected at low levels and infrequently. The city does not have treatment facilities, and any further treatment would need to occur at the Metropolitan or Cuyagus Municipal Treatment Facilities and would be costly. Analytical testing methods cannot accurately quantify analytes down to zero or near zero, so no further action is required or needed at this time. Recommendations for council are to accept public comment and receive the Public Health Goals Report. And that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Devlavovich, thank you very much for your report. Council members, are there any questions of staff? Four of my colleagues are nodding their heads, shaking their heads. I have a few questions, but pretty, pretty high-level ones. One is that the report, or you just stated, that the water treatment is done at Cuyagus, correct? It's not something done at city facilities? Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's correct. It's done through Metropolitan and then sometimes Cuyagus.
And then the table in the triennial report lists the state of different substances found and removed at these plants. Question for staff is, is testing done anywhere downstream, closer to the resident or the business here in Thousand Oaks?
I can answer that, John Minkel, Deputy Public Works Director. Yes, there is testing done downstream in our distribution system. You know, roughly about 20 samples per week are tested, certain constituents, you know, on a very regular basis, and so that is, that is done often, yes.
So we discussed this in our staff meeting, but I'll ask it again just to get it on the public record. For example, one of the contaminants that's measured is TTHMs, which contain different kinds of chlorine that's used in water treatment. Chlorine can accumulate if it sits around long enough. That could be a problem in a tank, but if I understand correctly, you're saying the city does two things. One, it moves water through the system quickly, and two, it measures to make sure that there's not a buildup, an accumulation over time. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, yes, that is accurate. Yep. That is, the goal is to move it through quickly to avoid disinfection byproducts, yes.
And then the final question, this is really outside of the scope of the Water Quality Report, but, but there was a statement made, true statement, that the city, for its entire lifetime, has imported water exclusively from the State Water Project. But it is also true, is it not, that we, in recent years, we've been beginning to look at alternative, second sources or third sources, if we can? That, that's something of great interest to, to the city and something we're actively looking at. Is that also a true statement?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, that is correct. The city has been pursuing and has been exploring many different alternatives and options as we look forward to the future for water resiliency for the local Thousand Oaks area, and we're continuing to work on those in partnership with Cuyagus Municipal Water District, Los Virginas Municipal Water District, and, and others to find some solutions that are more local, that can help bolster and diversify our portfolio of water supply.
I appreciate that, and this is where this is coming from, is I got a comment from a resident saying, "Well, one source, why aren't you looking at others?" And, and my response was, "We are." That's something of great interest to us all. So I appreciate the complexity, and the professionalism and the devotion you've shown in making sure that we meet all these standards, and in fact, the MCLs are well below those levels. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments for staff? Councilmember Engler.
Just, just a comment. The quality of our water is really remarkable. I appreciate all the work that goes into making that happen. When I was a young guy, our house was on well water. And I recall when the well went dry and we had brown water from just the dissolved minerals in it. That doesn't happen in our water system. And, you know, all, all the things that could go wrong with water systems, our city's doing a pretty good job keeping up on it. So I just wanted to thank our, our people for making sure that when we turn our tap on, we get clean water.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great point in comparison to the quality of other sources. I would make one more point on that as well. The report alluded to, there are trace amounts of chemicals. They're naturally occurring, they're in the soils. We may get members of the public who say, "Well, we want a zero-tolerance policy. We want zero." And that's probably not possible. We can get closer to zero, but there, there is, has to be a public health and a cost-benefit analysis toward getting there. And we're, we're essentially there, right? With it, with the measurement technology that's available, and with what we know about public health, and what we are doing, not only measuring at the water source here, but downstream, in, in some cases, at the customer's tap, we are doing everything we can to ensure that this water is, is a very pure quality at the customer destination. So I appreciate that. If there are no other questions or comments, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open things up to, for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Adam.
Yeah, I mean, these contaminants that you mentioned are virtually undetectable, although the uranium gives you that glowing complexion. So, kidding folks, virtually undetectable. Anyway, anyway, our water goes through many layers of quality testing. I mean, the utilities themselves have to test it, and the state of California requires that we test it, and by the time it gets to the residents of Thousand Oaks, that water is, meets state and federal standards, it meets EPA standards, it meets Water Resources Control Board standards, it's about as pure as you can get. So I'm quite confident that our water supply is fortunately abundant at the moment and quite healthy. So I would go ahead and move, what am I moving here?
10A.
Based on?
Based on, what?
Recommendations, one and two.
Based on staff recommendations. Very good. Thank you. Yeah, in terms of requirements, before, before we vote, I'll add that staff told me something kind of amusing in a way, that, that a lot of the requirements are found in a state document, which says, "Keep it simple, state this clearly." That document is 103 pages long.
Yeah, I believe it.
And spells out, "You must do this, you must do this, you must do this." Not only is staff doing all that, but, but doing additional testing at city facilities. Councilmember Adam, you alluded last week to, or last session to the extensive city water network, testing throughout that, and testing in, in selected homes as well, so.
It's ironic, too, wasn't, I know we all remember, just a few years back, we'd get most of our water from Lake Oroville. And remember the pictures of Lake Oroville, three or four years ago, just about, I don't even know, 20% capacity? What's Lake Oroville at now, these days? Is it full?
I don't believe it's full, but it's, it's in pretty good shape.
A lot better than it was, right?
Don't have the exact percentage.
Yeah. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, and similar, closer to home, I'm glad to see Lake Casita has water again. Couldn't believe how low that had gotten. Are there any other comments before we vote? Please prepare us for a vote.
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Again, thank you. Our next item is a department report on the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts, TO Arts. It's an operations and programming update. And I'll wait just a moment while staff gets in position, but I will note that presenting tonight will be TO Arts Board Chair, Mr. Al Lowe, and available for questions are the city's Community and Cultural Services Director, Jonathan Soret, and TO Arts- city's Community and Cultural Services Director, Jonathan Saret, and TO Arts Executive Director, So, we're just waiting for the slide deck to get queued up, and as soon as that's ready, we can begin.
All right, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Lowe.
Councilmembers and city staff, many of you I know, so this is very comfortable for me. My name is Al Lowe. I serve as Board Chair, and on behalf of the TO Arts Board of Directors, it is my pleasure to present our annual report covering TO Arts operations and programming for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. This year, we welcomed a new business owner, CPA, and longtime community member Matthew Burke to our Board of Directors. He had previously served with the former Alliance for the Arts. Matthew's expertise and commitment to the arts will be invaluable to the TO Arts Board. The Board also reviewed and accepted our annual independent audit report for the fiscal year 2024-25. The audit report provides a positive written opinion of the auditor with no negative findings. This audit was particularly important to TO Arts as it represented the first one completed independently without the generous assistance of the city's finance department. Our Governments Committee also reviewed our existing MOU with the city. It's hard to believe, but TO Arts has been operating for more than eight years now. During this time, we have experienced growth and operational evolution, which necessitates some updating of the MOU. TO Arts has shared proposed changes to the MOU with city staff for consideration. Following this process, we will bring the updated MOU to the city council for your approval. As we look forward the future to continue our partnerships with the city and strengthen our arts community. This past year marked the significant milestone of the 30th anniversary of the Thousand Oaks of a Arts Plaza. TO Arts celebrated this anniversary with Curtain Up, a masquerade ball on October 25, 2024, which a number of you attended. This fundraising event served as a centerpiece for sparking joy, which is the name of our Major Gifts Campaign to raise $5 million to ensure our community remains a place where the arts thrive for all. This celebration showcased the breadth of talent TO Arts nurtures while providing the perfect backdrop to highlight our campaign progress and secure critical funding commitments from our community supporters. I'm proud to announce the remarkable success of the Major Gifts Campaign, which has reached over 60% of the $5 million goal. A particular highlight was our partnership with the Toll Foundation, whose challenge match was successfully completed by December 31, 2024. Through the generous support of our community, we raised $350,000, which was matched dollar for dollar, generating $700,000 for the campaign. With $2 million remaining toward our goal, we remain committed to engaging our community and securing the resources necessary to continue serving as a premier cultural destination for Thousand Oaks and the region. Our commitment to developing the next generation of arts professionals remains a central pillar of our mission. Creator's Conservatory is our unique summer intensive course, serving high school students and collegiate students across all creative disciplines through a two-and-a-half-week program here at the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. Under the guidance of award-winning Broadway and industry professionals, Conservatory students created original works. One duo's comedic musical titled "The Tale of Two Kevins" became central to a participant's successful application to study musical theater composition at Yale University beginning August of 2025. The TO Arts Creative Envoy is comprised of Conservatory and Youth Arts Leadership Academy, or YALA, students who show exceptional dedication to the arts. These students serve as TOs, TO Arts ambassadors in the community. During this last fiscal year, Creative Envoy students accepted the proclamation of April as arts, April as arts and cultural month right here by new mayor Newman, participated in youth-focused groups for the county's arts strategic plan, as well as met with Akbar Alakhan to provide feedback on the downtown plan at an artist-focused group, and represented TO Arts at other community leadership events. A cornerstone of our workshop development efforts in YALA, the Youth Arts Leadership Academy, this year-long program provides comprehensive training in production management, budgeting, project management, communication, marketing, and nonprofit organizational structure, essentially preparing students for leadership roles in the creative economy. Additionally, these students all receive college credits through California University, Lutheran University for successful program completion. YALA Limitsless Arts Workshop Cohort II, Capstone Project, exemplifies the program's impact. A full day of cross-disciplinary programming, serving students from elementary through high school, culminating in a showcase performance, complete with a student art gallery and vendor marketplace. Beyond skill development, our YALA students have demonstrated remarkable community leadership. They organized the Revive Aid Fire Relief Concert in this theater, raising $6,200 for the performing arts departments of Palisades High School and Elliott Arts Middle School that's severely impacted by the LA wildfires. I'm especially pleased to announce that our 2024-2025 YALA Executive Committee will be recognized with the Youth in Philanthropy Award by the Association of Fundraising Professionals for Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties at National Philanthropy Day this November, a testament to their exceptional commitment to giving back. Our educational outreach continues to serve as a vital bridge between professional arts and our community students. Through multiple programs, we're ensuring that arts education remains accessible to all young people in our region. Through Access Arts, TO Arts funded $16,500 in arts programming for 700 students across five local elementary schools, providing experiences ranging from weekly dance lessons to capital improvement projects. Our Kids in the Arts program achieved record-breaking attendance with over 6,800 students and teachers from pre-K through eighth grade attending live performances, a 24% increase from the previous year. We presented four distinct productions across more than nine performances, featuring diverse artists, including Sammy Miller and the Congregation, Twin Flames, Kingman Shakespeare, and 123 Andres. Additionally, additionally, nearly 1,100 students across four Cano Valley high schools were inspired by national geographic speakers, including sports photographer Gene Fruth, cave explorer Robin Schoen, ecologist Heather Joan Lynch, and wildlife biologist Doug Smith, gaining insight into career paths combining scientific inquiry, creative storytelling, and environmental stewardship. Our Arts Odyssey Program serves 60 second-grade students at Madrona Elementary through nine comprehensive arts initiative activities spanning theater, visual arts, dance, and music. Programming included a field trip to Studio Channel Islands and three months of improvisational comedy workshops. We also launched the Music Production Sound Engineering Career Technical Education Pathway at Cano Valley High School, serving 30 students with industry-standard curriculum, professional guest teaching, artists, and hands-on experience at digital audio workstations. These students created original podcasts, beat samples, and songs. Our communities affording the broader arts community extends well beyond our own programming. This year, we strengthened partnerships and provided direct support to artists and organizations throughout our region. We brought world-class artist residencies directly to students at Oxnard, Newberry Park, Westlake High Schools, and also at Cal State University Channel Islands. Programs included Sammy Miller and the Congregation's Jazz Workshops, the Alejandro Britches Trio Traditional Chamas May Music Introduction, Ballet Trocadero de Monte Carlo Master Classes, and, and Las Grada Chadas Interactive Performances with over 200 students. This year, we granted $118,000 to 13 nonprofit organizations to subsidize their use of the theaters at BAPAC, making professional quality performance spaces accessible to organizations that might not otherwise afford them. We distributed another $60,000 among the venues resident companies, which are Five Star Theatrical, New West Symphony, and Pacific Festival Ballet, supporting their continued excellence in our community. Through our individual impact initiatives, TO Arts provided a violin and private lessons for teen and foster care through partnership with the Mark and Jacob Foundation. We donated a drum set to the Coalition for Family Harmony Music Room, supporting juvenile rehabilitation programs. And we partnered with the Mindful Veterans Project to offer healing arts experiences through complimentary tickets to the performances at the Cavali and the Sheer Theaters. TO Arts' commitment to community extends far beyond the walls of our theaters. Through strategic sponsorships, we've supported key community events and organizations that align with our mission, including the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, the 507 Turkey Dash, the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the California Representatives Conference. We continue our proud sponsorship of the city's annual pop-up arts and music festival, supporting these diverse programs that reflect our community. TO Arts staff continue to serve on community boards and committees throughout Ventura County, providing arts advocacy and professional expertise to regional initiatives. Their involvement includes board membership with TO Arts Trek and the Greater Cano Chamber of Commerce, and chairmanship with the Reframe Ventura County Committee in partnership with the County Ventura Arts and Cultural Department. We partnered with the County Ventura on the second Reframe VC Annual Arts Summit, bringing together over 100 artists and art workers and culture bearers from across east and west Ventura County. This collaboration, sponsored by Studio Channel Islands Arts Center, Oxnard Performing Arts Center Foundation, and 507, provided professional development and policy input opportunities. The summit served as a crucial platform for cross-regional collaboration and professional development in our arts community. TO Arts is continuing to serve as the fiscal receiver for Young Artist Ensemble, YAe, is a fixture in the local community, and provides local youth and teens between the ages of 10 and 19 with opportunities to perform in plays and musicals. As the largest presenter at Bank of America Performing Arts Center in fiscal year 2024-25, TO Arts presented 70 diverse programs to over 46,500 patients. Programming included world-class headliners, family shows, multicultural productions, dance performances, comedians, and national geographic speakers. Our family-packed program provided low costs and complimentary tickets to 332 attendees across 11 of these shows, ensuring families have access to live performances, experiences, regardless of their economic circumstances. We also presented free concerts in collaboration with the Grant Brimhall Library, bringing performing arts to a non-traditional space. This year, we presented Alejandro Britches and Twin Flames. We would love for you to join us for the next free library concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM as we present American Patchwork Quartet. And again, that's at the Grant Brimhall Library. We also continued TO Arts After Dark at Stagecoach, our festival-style outdoor concert series, carefully curated to present new and different artists to our community. This series featured four shows, reaching 732 attendees. As we look forward toward the future, TO Arts continues to evolve and grow. Effective July 1, 2025, the TO Arts Board promoted Nikki Chopper Richardson to Executive Director to guide TO Arts into its next chapter of growth and community impact. We're continuing TO Arts After Dark at Stagecoach in September and October, and we've already confirmed 69 performances for fiscal year 2025 and '26, with more shows being added as we finalize our season. This year, Kids in the Arts will bring four shows to BAPAC specifically for elementary and middle school students, including the shows Magic School Bus, the U.S. Coast Guard Band, and Wind in the Willows, among others, with unprecedented response from local schools and teachers. Our next Youth Arts Leadership Academy Cohort will start on October 6, and collaborations with Madrona Elementary and Cano Valley High School are already underway. Our new program, TO Arts Artist Incubator, launched December, this September. This program will provide essential business skills training to 11 multidisciplinary professional artists while supporting them with artistic mentorship, addressing a critical need in our creative community, and helping artists build sustainable careers. We are only at the beginning of this new season, but already this year, we've been able to showcase incredible performances, including sellout shows for comedians Vian Morgan, Bill Burr, Shen Wang. We are only 10 performances into our season, and we've already attracted nearly 13,000 people to the theaters. We have an incredible lineup of artists for the upcoming year. Some highlights include comedian Paul Reiser, comedian Hollywood medium Tyler Henry, international acclaimed instrumentalist Kenny G., comedian Kathleen Madigan, the multi-genre band Pink Martin, and children's performance Dinosaur World Live, among others. With the significant growth of our programs, this year marked an important milestone in our organization's evolution. TO Arts has established itself as a direct employer of staff. The significant growth in TO Arts programs over the past eight years has necessitated this important step. Our Board has adopted an opening, an operating budget for fiscal year '25-'26 that includes increased expenses for staffing to accommodate three full-time positions, complete with deferred compensation and health benefits. This investment in our human resources demonstrates our commitment to attracting and retaining the talented professionals who make our mission possible. And we have two new great staff. They're Casey Comstock Mills and Ethan Craig. They have just turned out to be incredible. Throughout this growth, TO Arts continues to remain nimble to the needs of the community while staying true to our vision of ensuring our community is a place where the arts thrive for all. In conclusion, we respectfully request that the city council take the following actions. First, receive and file the TO Arts Operation and Programming Update for fiscal year 2024-25 that we've presented here this evening. And second, find that this action is not a project as defined under the California Environmental Quality Act. On behalf of the TO Arts Board and staff, and the millions of patrons and students whose lives have been enriched by attending performances at the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, thank you for your continued support of our efforts and activities, and allowing us to be an active participant in the city's downtown project. Executive Director Nikki Chopper Nickerson and I are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. What a wide diversity of programming. Thrilled to hear that TO Arts is growing, all, all great stuff. Before I open it up to comments and questions, I want to issue an apology to TO Arts. We had some technical difficulties this evening, and we're unable to move ahead with the full slide deck, but I will ask staff to include that deck as part of the public record. So, again, apologies.
Thank you very much.
I think you captured the, the beautiful diversity of programming very nicely in your report, so thank you.
It is incredible, Mayor, how TO Arts has grown in the eight years since it was established.
Very much so.
It is, it is far-reaching now. Not only, we used to bring kids to Kids in the Arts into the Cavali, 6,000 kids. Now, we're dealing with high school kids, college kids, artists, artists that are trying to establish their business, and we're creating a, a way for them to get really technical and expertise to make their business thrive. Ventura County has started a cultural department, and we're working along with them, too. And so, we've just gone this way. And actually, having three staffs, we were just wondering how we're going to do it with just three staffs, so maybe more to come later.
It's a nice problem to have, I'm glad to hear it.
So, but we thank the council for your dying support.
Thank you.
And actually, having three staffs, we were just wondering how we're going to do it with just three staffs. So maybe more to come later.
It's a nice problem to have. I'm glad to hear it.
But we thank the council for your
Thank you. Council members, are there questions? Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Al. Great report, very encouraging. Love to hear good things about the theaters and the arts in Thousand Oaks. Appreciate your service to the arts. Sounds like we're in pretty good shape. 70 performances, a boffo box office, helping thousands of kids appreciate the arts. Nikki Richardson, our new Executive Director of TO Arts, out there fundraising. I know you set a big goal, and you're getting close to it. Really appreciate that. All good things. I want to look to the future just a little bit and maybe put Jonathan on the spot here. You may have heard we're thinking about building this downtown, which is going to be a reality, I promise you. And a lot of it will have a lot to do with the arts. You know, you've probably heard us talk about building an amphitheater, about a black box theater, about new amenities in front of the theater. Talk a little bit about how that's going to enhance the arts in Thousand Oaks, like the amphitheater. How might that be programmed? Or what exactly is a black box theater? I think people might want to know, and how that's going to promote the arts and maybe some of the stuff we're going to do in front of the Cavali.
That is an
It's all yours, Jonathan.
Excellent question, councilmember.
Looking to the future.
The downtown project is moving forward, and the arts are a central part of it.
They are.
We're building an entire downtown centered around our two beautiful theaters that we have here as the flagship of our arts community. And we're adding to it, as you mentioned, two additional venues. We have what is traditionally referred to as a black box theater. It's really just a variable configuration space. So it's a space that's smaller than where we're sitting tonight in the Sheer Forum. This space, for everybody's knowledge, is about 394 seats. We're looking to a space that maybe is about 200, but it has the flexibility for us to configure seats in different ways and to allow audiences different ways to be able to see shows. Sometimes we deviate from having the audience in front of the stage wall. This is a proscenium-style stage. Now I'm going into theater history and Theater 101, but this is a proscenium-style theater. You have the audience in front, we're looking at the stage. There are other options as well for us. We have a thrust configuration where you have seating kind of on three sides, and the action of the stage comes out into the center, or you have seating in the round where everything occurs in the center of a room, and the seating of an audience is essentially in a round, and the performer is surrounded. There's a lot of flexibility that that brings to an organization. We can use it as a rehearsal hall, which is something we currently don't necessarily have for the production companies that come here. In addition, the outdoor amphitheater presents a huge opportunity for the city in terms of community programming. You heard the litany of community programs that Mr. Lowe was sharing that TO Arts participates in. In addition to that, there are others in the community, and the pop-up arts and music festival that we do in June at various parks. And maybe we don't change that, or maybe we augment it a little bit and make sure we have performances here onsite as well. But it's a way for us to make sure that we have the connectivity with the community, we have the action that we can provide things for people to do, and give them reasons to come out downtown and hang out with us in this new, really cool space that we are contemplating and building and moving forward on. We're essentially creating a wonderful artistic hub and cultural hub and entertainment hub for future generations of Thousand Okians and Caneo Valians to enjoy. And in addition to that, the downtown project also calls for an arts incubator space. And you may have heard Mr. Lowe, as he was presenting, he was talking about the new artist incubator program that TO Arts is getting off of the ground. And this is a way for us to assist artists as they're moving forward into their careers, or even some of them who are established careers and just wanting to take on and learn new skill sets, to help support them as they make a living out of their art and their creativity. And an active arts incubator space is a space that we can have where artists can use that as creative space, where they can be creating art, but also we can be showcasing art. We can do demonstrations, we could do lectures, we can give people reasons to walk. You can go through the food hall or the public market, grab a cup of coffee, and actually walk through the artist incubator spaces and see art happening. And it's a very cool melding of many types of commerce, because art isn't just something beautiful to behold. It certainly is. But art is a business. Art is commerce, and the creative economy is a big part of the Caneo Valley and our economic health. And we're looking to invest in that and build upon that strength. Did that suffice to answer your question?
Boy, I like the way you put that. I knew I asked the right guy. Now, those are exciting prospects. They really are. And it shows you that, yes, our downtown will have residential, yes, our downtown will have restaurants and these kind of things, but the arts is a huge focus as well. And as you said, I think that was very well put. Arts is commerce. Arts is commerce, and arts enhances commerce. Arts makes commerce happen. So I think you made some very good points, and I appreciate you expounding on that. So we have a really great future when it comes to the arts here in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for those individuals who do live onsite, what a great opportunity to have all of this art and entertainment at your walking distance. You don't have to drive anywhere. Come on downstairs and come across the street.
No question about it. As far as residential, that's got to be a lure, for sure, to be in the heart of it, without a doubt. Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments or questions of staff? I just want to add that, Mr. Lowe, you made reference to it in your presentation. In developing the downtown master plan, there was a session specifically to gather input from the arts community. It was very well attended, there were a lot of excellent ideas, and it shows, we really do have a vibrant arts community here. One of the key takeaways for me, I was not able to attend in person, but I've watched it several times since then, was we need more spaces. We need more opportunities for our arts community. And I'm delighted to hear that TO Arts is thinking about different ways, thinking about new partnerships, different kinds of venues, different programs. It's important because there is a need there, and as Councilmember Adam just alluded to, there is a great community benefit from this. The arts make life better for all of us, and I want to thank you for the essential role that TO Arts plays in that.
Thank you, but we also thank the council and the city for your support, without which we wouldn't be able to do what we do. I know some of you are founders of the Cavali Theater and the programs there, so thank you very, your support goes way back. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it. If there are any other comments, questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to move staff recommendation on this one. Just wanted to add that many friends of mine love the concerts in the parks that we're putting on now. It's the month of June, people are putting it on their calendar and dialing in those dates already. So it's a wonderful addition to our community. It's one of the cornerstones of what really makes Thousand Oaks special. So thank you for that effort on your parts. It's really enhanced arts in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor. Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Again, we're grateful thanks to TO Arts and to Mr. Sorette and community staff for all you do. We move next to announcements and upcoming issues. Ms. Hardy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Our next city council meeting will be on October 7. For a public hearing that evening, we have the Building Division Code update, and we also have the Lake's Amendment to their development agreement. Under Department Report, we have the transferring of city property at 524 Jan's Road to Caneo Recreation and Park District. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. We are adjourning this evening in memory of Ricardo Rick Gonzalez, who passed away in January at the age of 86. I want to acknowledge that Mr. Gonzalez's family has joined us this evening, and thank you for that. Rick graduated from the Mapua Institute of Technology in the Philippines as an architect and immigrated to the United States in 1981. Retiring in 2008, Rick was a valued member of the city family, having worked as an engineering technician for 20 years in the Public Works Department. Rick provided technical support for construction projects, including the Community Transportation Center, Holland Drive, and Freeway Interchange Landscaping. Rick was instrumental in the construction of the Eco-Friendly Transit Center, which earned the city's first Leadership Silver Certificate in Energy and Environmental Design. His skills were so extraordinary that he received three City Exceptional Service Awards in 1994, 2002, and 2008. Rick also used his great artistic talents to create numerous graphic designs used throughout the city, including the oak leaf and acorn motif, the Civic Arts Plaza rendering used on note cards, and multiple celebration announcements. Rick's dedication, knowledge, and creative skills were a constant source of inspiration. He will be deeply missed by family, many friends, and his city coworkers. We bid a farewell this evening to Mr. Gonzalez. And we adjourn this meeting in his memory to our next regular meeting, October 7, 2025. Good night, Thousand Oaks.